Jeremy, Jonathan, you guys ready to start?
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
No, Pat, thanks. How are you doing?
Good, good. I feel like I should wait to just confirm that Jeremy is ready, too. How was your weekend?
It wa- it was pretty good. The weather wasn't so great, was it, today? Boy, what a, what a day.
Yeah, Saturday was good. No, Friday was good. Saturday was rough.
Yeah, well, I mean, it may, actually, Saturday, I just decided I was gonna get all my chores out of the way because the weather wasn't that great, and it was great for outdoor stuff. So I just, I just, like, worked hard all day, and then Sunday, I really took the day off, which was lovely, so.
Good for you.
How about your?
It was, it was good. We did a little bit of an early weekend. We sort of did, like, Friday to Saturday.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
I should do that a little more frequently.
Yeah. That's good. All right, so.
Especially in the summer, because everything gets crowded in the weekend, so you might as well just, I have a lot of flexibility with my work, so I might as well just trade off some of those crowded days for less crowded days.
Yeah, we looked ahead and saw that the weather was gonna be better on Friday, so I just, let's do something on Friday instead of waiting.
Yeah, celebrate the last week of school.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. Although Mary is working right now, so she's gone a lot, so it's been hard to find a time, like, have dinner all together and stuff.
Is she at Canteen?
She's actually at Crossroads, but Creamy, yeah.
Okay. Where is Crossroads?
Oh, you know, it's the convenience store right at the Roundabout.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and a bunch of our friends are working there, so.
That's nice.
Yeah. All right, Jeremy, are you there yet?
Is Tim coming?
Oh, there, there you are. Hi. So I just heard from Tim that he can't make it, so it'll just be the three of us, and welcome to our guests as well. I see John, Kristen, Laura, and Maureen are also with us. So, we, we really use this as a working time for the group, and what we were able to do last week, that the timing just worked out pretty well to periodically get feedback from any guests, so we may have time to do that tonight as well. We'll just kind of play it by ear. Does that sound good, gentlemen?
Yeah, I think that sounds fine.
Okay, great. So, again, I, oh, I, I created those shared documents that we can all type into, and maybe I will just do.
Do you want me to share one of them from my screen?
Oh, sure, that's great, thank you. I was thinking we could start with the minutes one.
Sure.
And one thing we can do is we need to we need to just approve the minutes and stuff from.
Yeah, do we have, I don't.
I sent them out in the packet from before. If you're not ready to approve them, we can just do it next time.
Well, I doubt there's too much in there. I haven't looked at them, but.
Well, let's see, did you happen to look at them, Jeremy, or? No? The minutes from last time?
Sorry, the whole screen changed here with sharing.
Sorry.
I am on Zoom a lot, but it's still, it's always.
Well, we can, last time, we just left our things unmuted, and it made it pretty easy, so we can just do that, maybe.
Sometimes I get, well, I guess it's only three of us, but there's a lot of background eyes of the baby, and when lights up my screen here, but, yeah, yeah, I had to prove the minutes from last week. I felt cool doing that.
Okay, so if.
I'm still trying to find them. I'm just, just like, because I missed them as I'm flying through, so I'm just, just trying to figure out where, how I missed them. Are they in the, you said today, this afternoon?
No, I thought they were in what went out on Thursday.
Thursday.
Last week, when we warned.
Yeah, they were, they were in the packet, the packet, the.
Right, 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 right. I never opened that, I guess.
It's really, it looks to me like it's just the, the notes that we took.
Yep.
That are in the, you know, the same format here as this table format.
You know, why don't we just wait, and we'll approve them next time? Does that sound good? And then we'll have had a chance. Does that?
I am, I, I don't think there's been much editing on them, and we all wrote them together, so I, I don't.
Okay. All right, so here are no objections, then we'll just approve those. Does that sound good?
That sounds fine, yeah.
Good.
All right, and, oh, I forgot to write, we called the meeting to order, we'll say 7:05, because we were a little bit chatty before we got going. Okay. So, last time, we had this, we kind of developed, like, the framework for, that we wanted to use to think about this planning process, and what some of our priorities were for it, and I thought, I was hoping that this time, we could kind of start, like, making some lists of what needs to happen and who needs to do it. And then we can also, as we go, talk about the format for sharing those lists. So, what we're kind of trying to do is basically together, create a timeline and process for making a decision about merging the seven eights, making a decision next fall about merging the seven eights for the following school year, which would be 21 to 22, if we're picking up where we left off in our last conversation. Does that sound like what everybody else is expecting?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm expecting.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess, I wondered, do you want to start just, like, digging into that? That, it's not an Excel sheet, it's the Google, whatever they call it, thing first, instead of doing this. Yeah, should we dig into that first, then, and just use that as our format for collecting ideas? Or do you want to talk for a while first, and then apply that to?
Here's the, right, the sheets.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess, I was just thinking about this this afternoon a little bit, and, and one of the things I was, I'd noticed your question, is there any additional information we expect to need, and I was thinking about the information that we had last time, in terms of when we first voted on this, we received a packet that had some ideas in terms of what education at Crossit was gonna look like, in terms of what classes would be in different places, and how the gym, you know, shared work, and how the, you know, what the cafeteria shared work, like, and all those pieces, and I mean, I think that maybe part of the reason that 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 didn't pass that first time was just because it was put together, we obviously didn't have a lot of time to put it together at that point, and it's put together pretty quickly, and I think there was, there was some concern about some of the details that's in that packet. And so I was thinking that given that we're gonna have a lot, you know, we have several months before we approach this again, that probably revisiting that packet and updating, in terms of additional information that we need, updating that with an emphasis on some of the questions that kept coming up with respect to class sizes and the the space, the utilization of the gym and the cafeteria space, and, 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 and sort of how music classes would happen. I know there were some on the board that kind of felt like, when we started talking, thinking about that, like, you know, are we micromanaging this decision? You know, the, but at the same time, I feel like in order to make the decision, is this best for our students? That, having that laid out for us in terms of, okay, this is what education's gonna look like in a combined school at Crossit Brook. I think, so I think that, you know, having the administration put together that, that plan a little more comprehensively with a little more time would be worth, would be worth doing.
Yeah, I agree. I also feel like the context that we're considering it is a little different now, so before, we were considering it partly in the context of the bond, and with the guest estimate expectation that a bond would pass within a couple of years, and or within a year or so, and that feels like that might be different now, so wanting to do modeling, like, essentially without the bond.
Yeah.
That feels like a very real possibility.
Right, and I mean, I think a lot of people were like, this is okay, because the bond is coming, even though it's not ideal, but now, we don't necessarily, you know, and I think some people were like, well, I don't feel comfortable approving this prior to the bond passing, just because of uncertainty. So, I also wonder, I mean, I guess we can just hope that the type of because we're talking about 21, 22 year, we, we can hope that these concerns about adequate social spacing are less, because, you know, it seems like merging a lot of people into, into one school, which is, which is, you know, it wouldn't be ideal for next, for next fall, for example, if we were planning to do that. But I don't know whether we need to consider that, or whether we can operate with the, under the assumption that one way or another, some of those social distancing concerns will pass, whether it be through vaccine or herd immunity, hopefully the former.
Okay, yeah, maybe I'll put that for now, like, I don't want to lose that idea, but maybe it's not quite the same thing as, I'm thinking of it almost like a sort of data packet that we need to, like, refresh for the board and the community before we get started with this conversation next fall.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's as, that the second point is as important as the, as the, as the data packet point. And then I think the other thing is I think it's important that that data packet be seen as, you know, not an advocacy packet. I, I don't know, just, just, you know, sometimes it seems as though it's more like about data, I guess. I don't know. It's, maybe that's maybe I'm overstepping a little bit, or, or I'm not trying to make an accusation or anything, but.
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't perceive it as an accusation. I think some of that is like, how does the board handle the data when we receive it?
Yeah, agreed.
And I also think, I guess one of the things I'm wondering, and this is maybe a conversation to continue later tonight, would be can our committee ask for permission from the board to review the data prior to its release, and see if we would have suggestions about presentation of information? So not trying to change the numbers, but just making sure that everything is presented in a way that's understandable, that tracks from, you know, sheet to sheet, that kind of stuff, because I feel like that's something. Last time, we sort of developed some of this data in stages, like, we'd get one set of info, and this has actually kind of happened throughout our process, for better or for worse, we get one set of data, you know, one week, and then two weeks later, we get sort of an addition to it. And this is an opportunity to try to put all this stuff about the seven eight merger together into one packet, and update it with any new information or learning that we've done since, since it started.
I think it's a good idea, and I think what you say, you know, maybe gives us a chance, you know, in terms of the overarching question of communication that, that we're working on, and that sometimes having the board have a chance to look something over before it gets widely disseminated is a good, is a good way to go.
Okay, maybe I'll move that over to action items and next steps, and I do think that'd be something that we, we would need permission from the board to take on that role prior to publication. We can, we could talk more about that later. This doesn't have to stay there, if that, so if you realize, as we talk, that that doesn't feel right, we can, we can just come back to that. Okay. Any other, any other pieces of information that you feel like you'd like to see? I guess what I'm hoping is that by the time we start this conversation, we've got all the stuff that we need, and so it's, sometimes it's hard to even get in gear to think about all those things, but since we've sort of started this list, is there anything else we'd add to this list right now?
Well, I wonder if this might be a time for us to get, get public comment.
Oh, sure.
As we're sort of thinking about what information that we'd like to have in front of us.
Okay, so what I might do is I'll take, I'll, I'll take public comment, and I won't take notes during public comment, but then what we'll do is, as a committee, we can review comments and see what we'd like to add to them. And it's, does that sound pretty good?
Sounds reasonable.
Approach-wise, okay, so I'm gonna have to change my screen to see this. Sorry. Gosh, I'm stuck at this, sorry.
Thank you, doing fine. It's always a little delay.
Okay.
Rowan was in the would, would, was, was, would have gone to National History Day in DC, but so they had the, they did it all over Zoom, and they had major technical difficulties, like, there was no sound in the opening ceremony, and it was, so, you know, these things happen.
Yeah. Okay, I messed it up again. Sorry, I think I've almost got it. Okay, so I'm going to attendees and trying to see that. Also, I will welcome Christine and Kelly, who have joined us, so attendees, please, we invite you, if you'd like to share a comment, in particular at this moment, about what, what information do we need to be asking for, making sure is in a sort of collection of data about this seven eight decision in the fall. Christine, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I think I'm, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
I was thinking about this, and I came in a little bit late, so I don't know if I missed Jonathan saying this or not, but in talking, in like, kind of comparing the seven eight, and even like with this advocacy piece, like, as a board, maybe what we should be advocating for is equity, right? Like, that's kind of part of the mission of our boards. But one of the things that we didn't do kind of the last time around, and might also help us with our decision-making going forward, is if, you know, we have the comparison of like math and science between the two schools, but, but what about the rest in terms of programming and what kids get week in, week out, or over the course of the year? So if there's, you know, like, I had a question in looking at the schedule that Tom had put together, it looks like seventh and eighth graders at Crossit get music, regular music, not just band and chorus. So if there are differences like that, or sustainability, so like, if we could get a full inventory of the differences between the two programs, and then it becomes a, like, okay, if we want to have equity, if it's still two schools, and we want to have equity, I, I know we kind of briefly said, this is what we think it costs, but what would it really cost? So, because I think that fallback position of just kind of leaving Harwood as is without attending to the programmatic differences between the two schools is, you know, in a sense, it's like a moral shortcoming, like, it's, it's been a few years, and if one of our goals as a board is to address equity, then we really need to, if we're gonna continue to have two campuses, we need to address those equity issues.
Okay, thanks.
That.
Oh. Sorry, Christine, I might have cut you off accidentally. Did I? You're good, okay. Kelly. Kelly, are you ready? Yep. Kelly, would you like to make a comment? You seem like you're still muted.
The mute icon next to you.
Yeah, I think I've given her permission to speak. Kelly?
Okay, here I am.
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Um, you know, I am having this problem that I am losing my cursor every time I want to do this. It becomes like the magnified cursor instead. So I guess, well, I had, I had a few thoughts, I guess, and one was, I guess, to see the whole picture, like, where, what is the timeline, and not to have a timeline, but I guess the process of this needs to happen, then this, then this, then this, and so because we don't have the bond first, it still kind of feels like the cart before the horse kind of thing. So, but I guess I was also thinking a lot about this as well, and just around why, and you can say this is a different conversation, for sure, but I really loved Laura Schaller's comment last week around, or two weeks, whenever it was, around using, having all the seventh and eighth graders merge to Harwood, and really seeing that space as a vibrant space for different opportunities, bringing back, you know, tech ed and sustainability there, as well as home economics, and just thinking in terms of what this pandemic has already unveiled, and then that way, there's not a bond, because that school currently already needs to be fixed.
Okay.
I know that was, you know, I, I just thinking in terms of a complete configuration of, you know, of Crossit Brook and Harwood, and having all seventh and eighth graders at Harwood, and maybe Crossit Brook looking more like four, five, six.
Yeah, so the charge that we have from the board at this time is to work with the plan that was developed in November, and to look into implementing that. So I'm gonna disable you, but we can, we'll continue this as a committee. I did have a thought relative, related to what you were saying, Kelly, so if you want to add to this later, then we'll do that. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, can I just say one other thing? I, I kind of feel like COVID, you know, I, I get where, that that's what you wanted to do, is go with the plan from November, but I feel like we're in a very different state right now, and recognizing that, and who knows, you know, what that looks like even next year from now, and, you know, maybe, maybe it all brushes over, but I think that it's, it's creating this opportunity of thinking outside the box, and what is it that, how can we entice students moving into our district in a different way, I guess, so.
Okay.
Anyway. Thanks.
Great, all right. I do think one thing, just to remind all of us, committee members and the audience, is that the way these committee works is they're basically at the behest of the board, so we are carrying out a task that was assigned to us, and we don't really get to decide to change direction midway. So the last direction from the board, which was just a couple of weeks ago, was that we are continuing with the, the plan that was approved in November. Now, whether some of these topics come up at the board table, again, that's, well, you know, we'll see. Related to your comment, Kelly and Laura's and Brian's last week about essentially, why aren't we looking to move everything to Harwood Middle School? Or everybody to Harwood instead of moving the seventh and eighth graders to Crossit? Committee members, I guess one of the things I wondered is if it would be valuable to ask the board if they want us to put together some data about this, that, like, of data that we've already collected? Because for example, in that bond review report, there, there are a lot of numbers that we already have that help us understand not necessarily exact costs, but relative costs, things like that, so it does seem to me that the, the, between the work that was done in the fall from like, you know, the site evaluation, or site, site notes and stuff from Ray, and then the the bond, the bond work that got done in the spring of 2000. I'm sorry, I'm losing time, but not 2019, I think it was, that we actually have some information. Is it worth asking if the board would like us to put that together? Because we're not looking to open up the discussion, like, that's, the board has not indicated any interest in wanting to renegotiate with each other, the initial plan, and but there's continued to be a lot of questions about the viability of this other idea. What do you guys think?
I had a thought here. Maybe, I think it's all related. I sort of had a thought that was going, and then you said that, and I think it's related, is my point here, right? I, you know, one of the things that I think we were engaged in at our last in-person meeting, I think, actually, was discussions around hiring, I guess, I would call them like public relations firm, or something like that, to to sort of like communicate, communication for, I don't know what we would term them, but to talk about the bond to the public, understanding that that's not the board's wheelhouse necessarily. And it has over and over again been identified as an area for improvement for both our superintendent and the board, and so I wonder if maybe taking some of that, those funds that we might have put towards a bond communications report, whatever it happens to be, and sort of, and bringing that back to the board and saying, do we want to engage in that with, with this project? Because the bond seems to be off the, the table right now. And we're talking about a big change, which, you know, I was really, really, really in agreement with Jonathan in that in his first part around updating, you know, the additional information question. And, but he sort of lost me in that stating that it should not be an advocacy packet, and, and I don't know how we you know, the board passed it, so the board, as a whole, you know, as a, as a voting body, believed in the facts as they were put down. The problem was that, you know, we had about 2,000 people come out who might not normally have voted no, and they voted no because they didn't believe in the facts, and so you know, I don't, I don't know that it's just about the fact. I don't know what a communications firm does. I think I'd like more information about that, but I, I wonder if if that could be a recommendation, that we, we ask them to pull that information together in a way that is not just the board, because I, sorry, I read that document, the 30-page, that's a lot of information, and I don't know if you could have done a better job putting the information down on paper, but it doesn't matter if it's good for us. It matters if it's digestible and accessible for the public, right? And that's ultimately is gonna you know, vote on the budgets that we put in front of them, and what we've seen more than ever, I guess I would say, based on the commentary that I've read, is that people are voting no on a budget based on one issue thinking, and that's a real problem for us going forward here, especially if we're talking about being in a real stark reality, so I, that, so yes to your question, I think, that I would support this idea of bringing together the information. I just wonder if we're the right people to do it, or if we should be looking to some folks who have a professional experience and, and, you know, make their living off doing this type of thing.
Okay. One thought I had as Christine talked, and thinking back to this idea of what additional information do we need? You know, Christine, I heard you saying, is there a, oh, is like, what's an inventory of the differences between the two programs? But you know what I'd really like to see is perhaps that, but especially what would the new programs look like? Because I think we've, we've talked, it would be nice to see, and this maybe comes back to some of what Tim was saying before, like, how do we talk about this beyond just money saving, but, but about quality improvement, and you know, so maybe I'll just type it, a sort of comparison of each school and what the new school would be like. So, then, parents who are at Crossit Brook and might feel worried that they're gonna get less music than they do now, we'll see. Okay, this is what, actually, what we think it's gonna be like. We, we don't think there will be a, you know, a dilution of programming, and maybe, and ditto, you know, so hopefully, we could really see all three of those things, not just perhaps the differences between the two programs as they exist now.
I think that's a great thought, that there's, that's an acknowledgement that there's concern on all sides of this. You know, where people are landing on this question. You know, where people are landing on this question and, you know, to address only one side of that, you know, let's call it the valley side, is, would be like an inappropriate, you know, like leaving out whatever 36% of our constituency or whatever, in terms of maybe what they're feeling as a concerns. I mean, I love that idea, that it's more of a, you know, what would that new school look like versus, you know, who's losing what? Who's, who's losing this, who's losing that, focusing on what, what the ultimate outcome would look like.
Yeah, and I like the idea that Christine had about like categorizing the, the status quo as well. Because I think that's, that's useful to, to get a sense of that. And I also, you know, I mean, I, I do feel like a lot of the public feedback that we got said that equity is not necessarily equality. So it, if it's about sort of the overall educational experience. So if, if someone, it doesn't mean that everybody, if you did have separate, like elementary schools, for example, that we have to like, say, you know, go down to the minute on, on how much mathematical instruction they get or something along the lines of that. But I do feel like equity is a, is a critical question. I appreciate her bringing that up and having that, that categorized. And I think, but I do feel like, you know, going back to this, the, the, the budget vote and saying, well, we've, the board has already decided in favor of this. Well, I mean, obviously the board was of mixed minds because there were many votes. And most of them negative prior to the last one. And I think, but I do feel like it's, it's different. It's, it's, it's new now, like to go back to that and be like, well, the board direction is, you can also go back to the vote for DC, which was, which was again, a, you know, that was a more definitive vote with, but I guess what I'm saying is that I think that a lot of that vote, at least some of that vote, took into account this concept of the bond. And so I do feel like, obviously, we have to vote again and figure that out. We have to figure out what, what it looks like, you know, as, as, as Tari said, without the bond. And we have to maybe think a little bit about, so maybe another piece of information would be if there's, if there are any recommended renovations using the existing, sort of like, I guess, maybe what, how the maintenance fund falls into this? Because Harwood obviously needs a lot of that money just to do ongoing maintenance. Is there going to be anything left over to make any changes to Cross at other than adding the pod, which is not probably part of the maintenance fund? But is there? Or is that basically, are we just looking at adding the annex? Whatever you like to call it, and then keeping that there permanently? Or would there be a plan to budget a certain amount of money for renovations year to year? So we are looking at a development of that school, the physical plant of that school, that may be roomier. I don't, I'm trying to be nonjudgmental. I don't want to say like more appropriate, but might, might have, you know, so, so I think I might be another piece of information to, 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 to look, look at. But I guess the reason that I was, was saying that I was concerned about that, that the potential for advocacy is that, you know, I, I, I think that it, the board still has to weigh in our current COVID reality, these two, these two pieces against one another with, because there are, you know, one of the, one of the benefits is that in a, in a post-COVID world, we're going to be probably facing some very difficult budgets. And really the need to cut costs, so that's a major benefit and I'm likely to carry the day. But the, the, the non-benefit to the plan is the fact that we, we, we have really, we have no idea when we might recover enough to, to add, to do the building to the school, like, like I think we originally planned to, when, when this, when this passed.
I think, I, I actually, I don't want to get too caught up in this idea of advocacy, because I think you guys are actually talking about two different timelines. Like when we talked about this data packet and not wanting to make it an advocacy piece, that's different than after the board makes a decision and then we might advocate for whatever the decision was, right? So I do think what we're, what we've been talking about in this idea of this, what additional information do we need is, what information does the board need to, to reconsider this question that it had worked on earlier? But it will, it would be, it will necessarily be reconsidering it in a different context. And then it will be making a decision, right? So the new context is probably no bond, it's post-COVID, it's new school board members, it's ongoing community conversations that may have changed our understanding, so.
I agree, that's, that's a great point.
Done deal. I think this is about how do we now take up the question in a thoughtful, intentional way that isn't about renegotiating the whole thing, but it's about, okay, where are we now? So.
I think that's a good point, and I agree that, that once you make the decision, then, then yeah, then, then you go full speed ahead in terms of, of selling that. And I think that'd be, I like the, that's a nice way to get us over what, what may be unnecessary argument.
A couple of things that I have thought of that I think would be useful information would be more details about the annex. What does it look like? You know, how could it be used? What's it going to cost? All that stuff.
Yeah.
Because, again, those were all things that we heard in chunks, but they sometimes felt like things changed or so. And, and even, and now, knowing that there's a good chance the annex would be there for a while, it's even more important that we feel comfortable with what it, it is or isn't.
Yeah, there was, there were some questions raised by the public about security. And I don't know if, if it would be any different in security than the rest of the, but I guess that'd be something that'd be good to know.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is part of it, is like, what does the board need to know? What does the public need to know? And I'm not trying to be like, oh, we don't want to ask that question because we might not like the answer. Like, if the answers happen to not be good, we need to know about them and then we will make a decision. How, how will bus routes be affected? Many people are worried about that. We may not have all this information, but we might. I would love to see, and we can take this off again if you want, 10-year cost projections with or without the merger, including taxes.
Yeah, like, that would be great, because, you know, I, it's good to, I think sometimes there was a little too much emphasis paid on the, sort of that initial cost of the annex. Whereas that could just be noise if you're looking at a 10-year projection, so, yeah, that's a good idea.
Great. Let's see, oh, I think this was related to something you mentioned, Jonathan, like, I think it was Jonathan, about like, what are some of the question, oh, class size? Like, I would like to hear more about things like class size, how will that be managed so that teachers and students will thrive?
Yeah, I know that we definitely heard a lot about that, so that's, that's an important one, yeah.
This is maybe connected to this idea that we were playing with, riffing off what Christine said of comparing this current programming to the future programming. But also, I was thinking, you know, how will the merger make our district stronger? Or would the merger? Because that's coming back to that idea that Tim was talking about, that we have often focused on just the finances and not the, not the more qualitative aspects of this, and also not the benefits, so. Okay, so I realized that, I think I saw another hand up earlier. And let me just explain to the audience that I can't type on this and see the Zoom at the same time, which means that I am sometimes operating a little blind in terms of my meeting management. Maureen, would you like to make a comment about this?
Hey, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can.
Awesome. Thank you, yeah, no worries, I appreciate it. Yeah, I just, I'm really liking hearing you guys talk about kind of new information, information you want to pull together. Just a couple of comments about, I guess I wasn't quite aware that the idea is just to keep looking at the plan from November. You know, I think most people agree that there is at least a, a big group of people that didn't like, or that voted no to the budget partly because of that. And I feel like you seem to be thinking that the public was just missing the information as opposed to not liking the information that's there. So I think it just might be worth having, bringing that to the bigger board and figuring out, like, is that, is that really what we're doing? We're just trying to do the same thing, but bring more information? Because, you know, we think we will solve more of the problems just by having people know what we knew. So just have you think about that. The other thing is, I appreciate what people are saying about how this is a new session because of the bond, because of COVID. Couple other things that I think are new that I hope you'll consider. One is, I've been, real estate trends, I've been hearing about, especially in this kind of post-COVID world, that the real estate market is booming. But I mean, I guess it's totally anecdotal, but is there any nation you can gather about that to try to understand if that might change your projections at all and some of your assumptions? And then the other new information is the survey information that, the survey results that just were published a couple of weeks ago. There were definitely some, I mean, obviously, all of our schools are struggling a little bit with physical and social emotional safety concerns on the part of students. And so I think knowing that information now should, that should be potentially another gate that look at and just make sure that at the very least, that whatever you're doing, you know, I don't know, have some sort of educational, it's certainly not, it's qualitative more than quantitative. But just make sure that you feel like it's not going to make that situation worse. Ideally, it's actually going to make it better. So that goes to, the other thing that I just was hoping that you guys would talk about is what are we trying to accomplish? And I definitely, I heard equity from Christine, I heard we, but clearly, cutting taxes is a big one. I heard Tari talk about what, you know, what's, what are we going to do that's more or better? But able to say what you're trying to do and make sure the whole board agrees. And then also, how do you know if you've done it? Are there any metrics you can use, even if they're subjective, that says like, oh, you know, this is why we think it's going to be better and here's how we're going to measure, measure that? And then, sorry, I just have a couple more things. I do think it's important to be honest about trade-offs. This goes a little bit about, to the selling. I think actually people will be okay if you say, like, this part is probably not going to be ideal, but we think that it'll be made up, more than made up for by these other things that are going to be much, much better. I feel like that might be easier for people to swallow than if they think that, you know, you're not addressing anything that's, that could possibly be bad. And then the last piece is kind of related to class size that you were talking about, Jonathan. But if you could define, what are you not willing to give up? So you're, you know, you're trying to do a lot of things like save money, you're trying to give more opportunities. Are there things you're not willing to give up, like a specific class size you really don't want to go over? Or a specific student load that you would not, you would not go past for like a specials teacher, right? Like, we'd never want to give an art teacher more than 200 kids to work with, or whatever the number is, right? If you can kind of say, like, these are things that we, you know, we would never sacrifice. I think that also just kind of speaks to the community that you're thinking about education and not just dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
All right. If we go back to our list, does that feel like a pretty good list right now that we're working off of?
Yeah, it's a good list, I think, I think, you know, the administrations, they see that list and be like, wow, that's a lot of information you're asking.
I do think a lot of it is stuff that's like just updates of things that have already been put together or kind of collating them in a different way.
Yeah.
And then I also think a lot of it is like stuff that, you know, for something like, how will this make our, how would this make our district stronger? And I think that's a 15-minute conversation for administrators, that kind of thing like that. They know all that stuff just deep in their hearts in a way that, you know, the rest of us might not, so. It is work, but I hope it's not like a ridiculous lift.
That's a good point, and I think, you know, what, what Maureen was saying got, got kind of what I was thinking about too. And just that, how important is this just be a, a data presentation at this point for making decisions? And it doesn't feel like it's being spun, because I think that's where, that, that's where you can get some, some resistance. And you know, I feel like some of the other data packets that we received did feel a little bit like, this is why it's going to, these are the 15 reasons it's going to be great. Maybe that's not entirely fair, but sometimes that's what it felt like to me.
Okay, all right.
I guess I thought I heard something different in Maureen's comment, that she'd be willing to have us acknowledge that there might be shortcomings in certain aspects of the plan, but that we're creating some type of, you know, pitch that balances that shortcoming with, with something that the board believes is, is worth, worth that shortcoming. And so, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know, I guess I just think, like, if the board is putting it, I mean, I'm there. I think we're getting ahead of this conversation anyway, so I'll stop there.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying though, Jeremy, and I, I agree with what you, with what you're saying. And it's just that, that, just keeping that balance in there, I think, is, is important.
Okay. I wonder if we could set this aside for a little bit and maybe we could take a look, Jonathan, at that sheets document that I sent out. And first one, we just talk about what format you guys liked better. So that was, there, I had just put two sheets on there.
Yeah, thanks, I just noticed there's a second tab, so I only looked at this one so far, so here's.
Totally fine, let's just take a look at both. Okay.
And here is view two. So, okay, so.
I already like view two better, just aesthetically. I know it feels a little jammed, but it also feels less spread out, which is what I'm actually.
Let me just go, I'm going to go back to one again here for a second, okay, so.
Like the doctor's office, view one, view two.
Hi, doctor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been to one of those. Okay, so this, basically what you've done is you have the, you have the tasks broken out by, by who's doing the work, and then you have the dates down the left. And on this one here, it's just less wide because you're not breaking it. Basically, you're just take, you're taking these pieces here.
Yeah.
I think, and I think, you know, I agree with Jeremy, that, you know, there's, there's, there's some risk to just too much white space. You know, if there's something that doesn't, that doesn't fit, so I, I, I agree, this, this looks better.
So we'll work off view two.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. So I put stuff in not because it was the right thing to put in, but I was making some guesses so that we could see it too. So how about if we start talking about and blocking in some dates and activities, does that sound pretty good? And you, you could also start, Jeremy and Jonathan, just deleting stuff if you want to take stuff out that's already there.
Okay, so this is by Friday, finalize committee materials for the board packet. That certainly seems like a reasonable, reasonable step to take there.
Okay.
And then approve the timeline. Then we have, that's at the next meeting. And then at the next meeting also, any additional questions? So we can start with what we've, what we've brainstormed today and then see if there's anything, any additional, any add-ons that we would like to put on that. Task the pre-K to 12 committee with synthesizing. the requests to pass on to the admin team.
That was just an idea, like, basically, we could listen to the board and then they would have already seen this, and then we would just put together the assignment for the admin committee. Because sometimes it feels like when we do these big board conversations, it starts to become confusing about what's really assigned and what's not.
Sure.
So that was one idea.
Right, so, right, so what they would do is they would basically, because there's no other board meetings, they basically say, we trust you to pull this together and give it to the admin team. Because we're not going to be able to have that approved by the board, correct?
Exactly. So that's why, but we would need to ask for that permission to do.
Sure. Yeah.
It could say, no, we're not comfortable, but.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
We could ask.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. And then, and then so then develop a task list for admin over summer. Specific requests. Yeah, I mean, I think that this all so far, so far I'm on board. What do you think, Jeremy? I see a nodding.
Okay.
Yeah, this is what we came up with. So I think that we, what we're looking for is some more direction. You know, we have this list of preliminary questions, but as, sorry, as you've said, we don't, we don't do anything without direction, right, from the larger board. So I think that if we can get some, some of that wider thinking and then spend some time bringing it together, it would be some more time.
Okay. I think we could almost skip ahead a little bit to, like, I think there might be some stuff we'd need to do over the summer, like maybe in August. If this, if this plan works with the board for us to work with the admin to develop a data packet for consideration in the fall, I could also foresee that we might need to, thank you for moving that stuff over. I could say, no, it's great. We might need to meet at the end of the summer before the first meeting and just talk about the data packet that we've received. And if we want to make some, you know, suggested changes to the presentation of information, by which I'm really just talking about like organization of information, not numbers. But we could add that later because I think it felt to me like we need to get to some bigger stuff like, when does the board first receive the packet? When does the community have received the packet? When do they, when do we hear from the community? When do we think we're going to do some votes, that kind of thing?
Just an idea that we could even narrow it a little further. I, I don't know what the purpose of the A, given that we, do we want to have just dates here? And, and then, and then descriptions here, or do we just have them as, keeping them all in one column? Doesn't really matter, right?
Oh, I think, oh, you mean, why do I have column A?
Yeah.
Oh, I was, no good reason.
Okay, well, maybe we just leave it like this for now, then.
That sounds great.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, so, so, right, so we don't, you're saying that there probably, there's going to be some dates before the 8/26 board meeting.
There might be, but we, but we have some important stuff to get to tonight that I want to make sure we start fleshing out. And then we can fill in some gaps once we get some of the big bones in place, I guess.
Okay.
So we had talked last week about trying to finalize this decision within three board meetings. So I think when we look at the dates, that's a big challenge. Should we try to see if we can figure out how to do that in a good way, or should we, or what?
Well, you know, I, I don't, you know, I mean, I know the admin team's not going to be sitting around doing nothing if we didn't task them to do this work. But given the lead-in of the summer, I'm hoping that, that that's still reasonable. I guess I'm just a little like, my recollection on the tasks that we had defined is a little, a little foggy. I don't, maybe those are in the minutes from last week.
From last week, um, yeah, let me.
Try to find that.
I bet I can probably find it for you, Jonathan, and I'll project it.
It's probably just in the minutes, right?
Yeah, but I, I think I've got it. Okay, how about if I switch over to projecting? So why don't you close out of projecting?
Okay, sounds.
And I'll pull it up.
And I can, that'll also give me a chance to pull it up.
Yeah.
As well.
Okay, so hopefully people can see that. So.
Yes.
Last week, timeline separate configuration from. I'm going now down to the action section just to see, want to approve timeline by summer so that we already have the first decision on MS question, perhaps even by the end of September. Public feedback, so we've got some guidelines in there that we wanted to follow. I see that comment, that need to do some planning around selling the assets or strength of the plan.
Yeah.
And I think that was, we can take that in the spirit of our continued discussion tonight, which was a little more nuanced than that sounds now, although that was. When, when does advocacy happen? It, you know, it doesn't really happen until a decision is made. But we are thinking about, you know, how do we share information? And so I'm not sure.
Would that be in that, I mean, I guess, I don't know, it's all sort of like it's contingent on the direction that the board takes in the fall. But I'm just wondering if like, you know, if, if, if we are interested in like sort of doing this with the help of an external party, like that took some time for Michelle to go out and, you know, and so I'm just curious, like, what do we want done by the end of September, early October? And like, is, is that piece around like sort of being very clear about potential trade offs, being very clear about what the board sees as, you know, sort of like the pieces that, like, again, if this is the direction the board takes, like, do we need that in the timeline now? Or is it good enough just to say that we are only putting out? Because I guess my question is really around this idea of like, are, we are carrying out the board direction, which is this D slash C or D parentheses C scenario. And so, you know, we're not creating a timeline by direction of the board. We're not creating a timeline that, that opens up a conversation for rehashing or renegotiation. So I think, you know, if we come back with a timeline that doesn't present steps for moving forward, I think, you know, we may frustrate some people if we have too aggressive of a move forward. But we also are going to frustrate, you know, what actually turned out to be the majority of the board. If, if we don't have steps that, that do move us forward. I think a lot of the frustration that we hear from that side of the table is that like, you know, we spend a lot of time rehashing same questions. And so I just, I just wonder if like, that is in our role to sort of say, we are, we know, we want the board to vote on a plan to disseminate information by this, you know, contingent on the board, assuming that that's the direction there. You know, you know, continuing in that direction, however we want to put it. So we're not assuming anything as a committee, but we're also, we've been tasked with creating a timeline. And so I feel like if we leave things off because they're sort of difficult to talk about, you know, in terms of like, are we there or not yet? And we haven't done our job as a committee to present a timeline that moves things forward based on the plan that's been approved by the board as of right now. And so I don't know if I'd shy away from sort of getting in some type of, getting in some type of like just board discussion around how we, how we present this to the public coming out of this committee.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Jeremy, and I do feel like we want to, you know, one of our goals is to just really get this presented and to get. I, I do feel like we could get the information that we need and, and have a vote pretty quickly. But I also do feel like there is, it's reasonable to get this, that we could have time for this public feedback piece.
I think we need to build that in.
Yeah, exactly. And I, and I think, right, like, early on in the, like, you know, sometime in the, in this, in, with, in late August or early September.
Okay, so let's just start filling it in and then we'll move things around when they do or don't work. Does that sound okay? So like, let's assume that life picks up again on August 26th and we present the data packet to the whole board. And then.
And that's the admin that's doing, that's, that's the admin that will be presenting that, I take it.
You know, I wonder if it should just be us, actually, I don't know.
Yeah. That could be, that could be good.
Okay, and so after, but so we can't really have a public discussion until the information is made public. So then we, what kind of?
Well, then I also, I guess the other question is, you know, we've really worked, thinking of us as kind of like the timeline committee. And, and I don't know whether we need to reform a pre-K, you know, a different committee at that point, you know, or open, you know, obviously, open that up again, but.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I mean, maybe, sorry, you've been around a little longer than I have, but I don't know that I'd ever feel comfortable. I have, I have time to prepare for the board meetings and I, I take that very seriously. I don't know if I'd ever have the time to learn a data packet in a way that I'd feel comfortable answering questions to the larger board that would then make folks feel comfortable about what I'm saying, right? And so I don't, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear more about what you, what you mean by us presenting it. Are we presenting the questions or are we presenting the answers?
I would say, let's not get too far into the weeds yet. Let's just like try figuring out what are the sort of benchmark things that need to happen? So at some point, and then we'll, and then we'll go back and we'll start to fix that stuff. So like, we know that the data packet has to be presented and then we know that we want to get public feedback. So how do we want to get public feedback?
I guess one question is, do we, we assume that data packet is fixed at that point? Or is the possibility to have board feedback, just thinking about, you know, a communication thing? Do we assume that's fixed and that's what we, because if we assume that that data packet is fixed, then we could potentially do it the week, we could do something the week after. If we need some board feedback, then we probably need to do it between the, between the 9/9 and the 9/23rd. So something like the week of 9/16. And that might make more sense
to get. So then potentially what you're saying is that the 9/9 meeting, what would happen would be comments, suggested changes to board packet, to data packet, right?
Yeah.
And then.
Sort of get that finalized, that, yeah, they'll be voted on. So we could get our initial comments on, at the presentation, but then any changes that were suggested would be voted on, I would guess.
Oh, so really, it's almost like what we'd want to do is we'd want to get the comments the week before. And then we want to finalize the data packet.
I would think, yes.
On the next board meeting. And so then, and that, the following week, we'd have some kind of public engagement activities.
Right.
And then one thing I know is we generally try not to go straight to a decision. So it feels like, is there something we'd want to do on the 20? Like, I wonder if there's a conversation to have on the 23rd, but the, but maybe the vote happens on the 10/14?
Yeah, I think that seems reasonably deliberative, yeah.
So what, oh, so I guess it could just be even, you know, sort of final discussion.
Yeah.
And, and like review of what we've heard.
Yeah.
Like reflections, I guess, discussion reflections on data and decision, something like that. Does this start to feel like some bones? So we've already sort of delayed. We, we've already gone a little later than we thought, but it, I do think there's nothing wrong with going a little later if it allows us to do a more intentional and reflective job in this case.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Jeremy? Is he still there? I can't see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything to add right now.
All right.
Does that seem too stretched out? Is it too stretched out, Jeremy, or is that an appropriate timeline, do you think?
You know, I'm trying to be positive here, but I know so many of these timelines we've come back with and they get stretched out further than we originally anticipated. And so, you know, I think one of the, when we met as a committee last time, we talked about sort of tightening our timeline so that we could build in the fact that we understand that things tend to stretch on their own, sort of organically. And so, you know, I'm, I'm open to the conversation, but I also think that, you know, if we're, we're owing it back to our original conversation here last week, that, or whatever last committee meeting, we acknowledge that the timeline tend to stretch on their own. And so, you know, I, I guess I have some concerns about stretching it as a, as a first step and then what that might do to the, the actual reality of it.
Yeah, thanks for that feedback. I think that's useful. And I, I mean, I guess the question is just what, what, whether we feel like it, whether we feel like we need two meetings to finalize this data packet? Or whether, whether we feel like at the first meeting back, we could have something. And I, you know, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned that that might take, that might take a little bit of work or a little bit of time to, to get that exactly what we want it to look like or as a board. And so, yes.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask you, like, what's, what's your hope for that time? Like, is it about the board? Is it about community? Is it about, like, who, who is the target audience? Or is it both, like, for, for giving that time for finalizing? Because I, you know, I think what we could do is commit to some serious, if it's about the public, we could commit to some serious, you know, bandwidth use, whether it's front porch forum, it's our, our normal channels of communication, and then some to get the word out there that there is this significant data packet that the board has sort of finalized for, you know, for reflections and discussion. And, you know, please get us your thoughts. If, if that's the target, you know, can we just, can we, can we build in a quicker timeline? But also understand that we're going to, we're going to inject some serious outreach and communication through that process as well, that timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, my thought was, I was thinking about the board really at that point. So maybe that makes it easier to, to speed it up, I don't know.
My perception is that you're, you're kind of doing this idea of finalizing the data packet in part to essentially give the data the board stamp of approval, so that it's that, it's trying to move away from that idea that this is just being pushed by a few people. Is that part of what you're going for there?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I, I guess, you know, I'm not sure that I was necessarily suggesting that it just sort of naturally evolved in terms of how, how quickly we can, how quickly we can turn that around. And I, and I don't know.
Now, I guess I would ask, like, is that the data, the interpretation of the data is, is endorsed? Or that we have asked a complete set of questions? Because I think, I mean, getting us to 100% is, is a, is a tall order. And I, man, that'd be cool, but I would, I think that if we can, at least as a board, endorse that we've asked the right questions and we feel good about the questions and that we have the information to go forward, that would be a win. You know what I mean? So just being, from our standpoint, being very clear about what we're, we're asking the board to endorse. Not the plan, but, but that we've asked all the questions, right? Am I, am I on the right path here for the thinking? Or are folks thinking that we, we want the board to endorse the plan at that?
No, well, no, right, just, just the, the, the presentation of the data that we're basing the plan around is really all I was thinking about. So that may be.
Yeah, I think we can get there on that faster timeline than, if that, that's the hope. I mean, because the, obviously then the rest of the conversation sort of stems from, you know, if we can get the board to, I mean, unanimously or very close to unanimously agree that we are starting from the same information, that was part of what held us up last time, I think, is that folks felt like we were looking at, or at least interpreting information differently or looking at different information. So I think getting at least that, that common baseline would be a huge, huge step forward and a real win. But I don't know that we need two meetings for that.
But yeah, Jeremy, how do you picture doing that on the 26th? Because if people receive, like, if the first time we're looking at that information is essentially on the 26th, there's no time to make a change, like, you know, it seems like that's a two-step process. The other thing I guess I'll say I worry about is I don't really want people at the end of August saying, oh, I have a question I forgot, I didn't think about in May, you know, or June, like. But.
Right here, yeah, that makes sense.
So then the.
Yeah, I mean.
Further back is what you're, like, that we ask all those questions and we get all those questions. Further back is what you're, like, that we ask all those questions and we get all those questions on the table now and then.
That's my, I mean, that's why I want to have this, because I think sometimes what happens, and this I do think is a challenge of our board is like, we often don't really pay attention to what the committees are doing until the final decision is before the board. So the committee made a presentation, but people didn't engage all the way then. And they keep, the, the committee keeps working and then the board is like, oh, really? I didn't realize that's what you were doing. So I don't, I want to have that all happen. Like if it's questions and have we asked the right questions? I know sometimes you look at their data and then you realize, oh, that didn't answer the question I needed answered. But, um, what, what's the balance?
I, I, I think, sorry, I, I love that, that thought. And when you ask that question that way around, like, how do you get to that within one meeting? It makes sense. And so I, if I'm hearing you right, I think you're, you're, we're trying to make sure that all that's there on this, at the end of this, this cycle, this school year. So that we can be in a place where we can, we can finalize that data packet on the 26th versus pushing it off another meeting, is that?
Well, I, I do think you like, you know, people need time to digest this. So if we were going to finalize this on the 26th, I think people need to receive it a couple of weeks earlier. I don't know if that works with admin summer
I don't think.
Schedules and planning for going back to school in a post-COVID world in August. It just, it means it sounds like a big lift. But I mean, I, I feel like we've, you know, gotten some feedback that people don't want to see something for the first time and endorse it up or down at that exact moment. It takes, I, I, I tend to be more ruminative. I know other people in the board have, have expressed the same, um, the same thing, uh, the need to sleep on it, sleep on the information a little bit. And then have time to get the, you know, your comments back, your comments together so that you know what, what you want to, if there's anything you want to add, what you would propose, you know, an emotion to add to that packet or. So, so, yeah, I, I think it's just, you know, I'm not definitely not just trying to throw a delay in here, but I do feel like, I, I don't know. I, I think it's, um, I, I do, yeah, I feel like it, it would be good to have the, a board endorsement of that as opposed to just having it, you know, as to come from, you know, a small group of people, which I think would be seen as more, nobody has really any time to look at that and the community has to feedback. I feel like if we, let's say we at the, at the eight, 26th board meeting, you know, received and sort of the, the, everybody received the packet, including the public. And then we had like a, a, a public outreach the week after, that there could be, you know, I don't know. It, it seems like that would be more contentious, just because of the speed of things.
I feel pretty good about what we have here actually, because, you know, I know that sometimes we are rough on timelines. But the truth is, with regard to the, um, pre-K to 12 process that we used all fall, people totally adhere to the timelines and nobody once brought up at the board table slowing things down. So I think we have actually a decent track record when we have such specificity of what we're trying to accomplish with each one. And, um, even though, like, I think, for example, that nine, nine, 20 board meeting to finalize the data packet, there's no real reason that that should take a lot of time. So it's also not like, yes, it's not the first three weeks, but we're not spending two hours at each meeting necessarily slogging through this stuff and then delaying. And I'd like the idea that we basically are asking the board to say, we think this is a good set of information for your consideration and for our consideration. And then sharing that with the public, we could, so, and then coming back, I like also the idea of having a meeting after we've had the public engagement activities just to share reflections and then having another couple of weeks where the community could get in touch with us if they want to before a final decision is made. So although we've stretched it out by one week or one board meeting, it feels like it's still efficient, but it's not rushed.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I like it and I, and I feel like, you know, we can, we could try to be really strict in keeping to it. And also because, you know, as you pointed out, the, this, this wouldn't take a, a lot at the, you know, the finalized and data packet. If there was, we have room in here, if, if something else, if we're like, oh, you know, we need one more public meeting or something. We would have the opportunity to, there's, it seems like there's room to fit that in.
Yeah, I like it after hearing the discussion here in this, this group. And I think that if we can, um, like Jonathan, you're saying that there, there's a number of folks who have voiced a desire to have some, some more time to, to, to ruminate on the information that, you know, probably what's most important is that we get a good stamp of approval on this timeline in the first place. We present it to the board and so that if, um, adding that extra board meeting in there, uh, helps people to feel good about the timeline right now. Then I think that's, that's a more important step forward than anything else.
Okay.
So in terms of this, have we, have we successfully got like some of these guiding principles on public feedback? Should we define what that, that public engagement activities piece looks like?
Great. Yeah, that'd be great. What do you think? And I feel like you've had the most experience in a lot of ways with thinking about these kinds of events and what would work.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm of mixed minds because there's, there's this sort of two, two ways to look at it, like having, having more meetings or having a, a, a small number of meetings in which sort of you kind of expect as much as possible everybody to attend. Because I think sometimes the, the issue with, with having a number of meetings is that the information that comes out, those meetings sort of, if, if not all the board is attending, then, which, you know, might be unreasonable to request or suggest anyway. But it gets, um, it's a little bit diluted.
Yeah, or we're all hearing sort of different stories. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, but I don't know, the, so this, I guess, um, when we, i- is there some? I, I don't know. Was there any? Were there any lessons learned from this, the last time that we went through this? And we, um, had a lot of uncomfortable meetings with teachers in the union and, and there, is there, is, was there a lesson learned? Is there somehow that we should bring them into the process earlier or more explicitly as opposed to just sort of having a single? Should we have two meetings, one which is specifically geared at that? And then another meeting that is more general? Is, is just an open question. I don't, I don't honestly know the answer, but I, but it'd be nice to try and have things. Didn't seem entirely comfortable the way that the feedback was received last time. And I'm not exactly sure the best way to avoid that kind of contentiousness.
Some of it maybe is part of that question of like, is it, is it sort of a, a one-way conversation or a two-way conversation? And I do think the thing about public comment is it's always a pretty one-way conversation. And even Q and A is fairly one-way. Somebody asks a question, the answer is given, but then there's not really discussion. When we had those Q and A events in the fall, we sort of tried to merge like the Q and A with a small group discussion.
Right.
I didn't feel like those necessarily were super effective or valuable.
Well, it's very, it's very hard to have Q and A when you're, you know, a 14-person board.
Yeah.
Because who answers the question sometimes, you know? So it's, uh, yeah, I, I guess we'd still need to give that, give that some thought. We can leave it. I think we have time in the schedule to do what, whatever plan that we think is appropriate. But I, but I, I, you know, at this moment, um, I, I don't have any, uh, any great ideas.
What about if we did? Well, I was thinking like essentially events, maybe one or two events that we each basically asked each board member, maybe two board members working in teams to lead small group Q and A slash discussion sessions that, because I felt like when we had those, remember we had a big Q and A thing at Harwood and then a big one at Crossit? Especially for my one at Harwood, we first started that people had a lot of questions still. And so we really couldn't move to a discussion until we'd had some answers. But then we actually had a really interesting discussion. My Crossbrook one did not feel as successful. It felt, um, less like a discussion and more like, uh, you know.
Contentious.
Play session or something, yeah. So which that, that was, I can hear that, but it didn't feel productive or constructive necessarily. So we could think about trying to organize something like that where maybe we put two board members together. And then we had, you know, conversations that way.
Yeah, that may be not a bad way to, to do it. And having it at the two, in the locations of where the two middle schools are might, might, it may make a lot of sense. And the small groups, I think they are useful. Again, sometimes it's tricky to distill all that information as something that's useful.
Yeah.
But people really feel like they have a voice and I, we've had some really, we've mostly had good experiences, I think with those, so.
And also I do like the idea of people being able to ask questions until they get the answers. You know, sometimes in a large session or you're reading through a packet of materials, somehow your question isn't being answered. And when you have a, you know, a small thing, you really can see that people really have a chance to say, I still don't understand what you're saying or, or whatever it is.
Right. What do you, do you have any thoughts about this, Jeremy?
Well, I would agree with Tari's assessment of the difference between Harwood and the Crossbrook experience. Not that the actual schools, the, uh, of those events.
Just those two events, yeah. But those, but they were identical, but they were basically the same event, right? It's just, it was just happenstance that they
They were.
Came off differently.
And in both cases, I did feel like people said that we did the big Q and A for too long. Sorry, go ahead, Jeremy.
No, yeah, I just, I, I just agree with Jonathan that I think it's hard when the whole board isn't hearing, um, all the information. And that I don't know how to solve that problem because I, I don't have the time to go to, you know, eight events myself. But I, I would agree with that as sort of, as a baseline issue with some of the outreach that we've done is that we don't get all the feedback to all the board members. And, um, so it can get weighted a little differently. I also just, the reason I did sort of like perk up Maureen and Christine's hands are up.
Shall we hear from them? Okay, so Maureen, I think I saw yours first, so why don't you go ahead? If you're ready, Maureen. I might have surprised you.
Oh, hi, thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't expecting.
Yeah, sorry.
Just what you were saying about discussing, it just reminded me, I don't know if, if it might be helpful to go back to one, the board engaged with Sue McCormick. She had some, um, good thoughts about, um, you know, people will discuss. I mean, you just need to be clear about what you want to hear from them. So if you have already made a decision and you're moving forward and, um, you're asking people to comment that they might either not comment at all or it might turn into complaints because they're, they're not really seeing it as a discussion, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, um, but she was also saying it's not, it's not that everything has to be like, the community has to decide on everything. I think it's just, I would just, um, remind you to think about making clear, you know, which is the information that is informational in one way and you're telling them and which is, which is feedback they can actually give to impact an outcome. And then, you know, hopefully just kind of setting it up that way. But I think in the ideal world, you wouldn't have too much, well, either don't ask the community if you don't really want to, you know, if they're, can't change anything. Or just be very clear that you're not really asking, you want to, you just want to tell them some stuff. And maybe what, maybe what you're asking is not what, about the plan, but about what data is missing or something. I don't know. It's, I guess I'm just trying to highlight, Sue did give us some pretty good feedback about how to, how to engage and that not all engagement is the same. And sometimes it's two-way and sometimes it's not. But don't try to make it two-way when it's not really, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more with that, that statement. So I would, I would definitely say being very clear about what we want out of the engagement, couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Christine, are you ready? Have I surprised you too much?
No, you haven't surprised me. I, I've been, I, what I was thinking, wanted to say was some along the lines of, of what Maureen actually said. It's just, I think we need to be careful about what it is we're trying to communicate out to people and how we want them to participate. I keep thinking back to when, um, Adrian came to our meeting. And he kind of said, and I'm, I'm sure I'm going to get this wrong, but if you're giving the people the impression that it's their decision when it's not, they're going to get really mad if you don't do what you, they want you to do. And I feel like we might be in a, coming into a situation next year where, um, depending on the financial situation, we, we really aren't sure, um, what that financial situation, what kind of pressure that's going to put on us. And I think, you know, the, the, the equity piece, um, for me, um, I think that's a big one because it is, it is, it is also about equal educational opportunities. And we have to make sure that there's, you know, you know, a couple of minutes here and there, but it, it, there needs to be more consistency across the two campuses. So if we are feeling as a board that we need to move this forward for a variety of reasons and then we go out and give the impression that, um, we want feedback on, you know, bringing the seventh and eighth together, and we've already decided that that might just turn people off more. But it, like you say, it's more about like, what are your questions or turns in bringing this work forward? How would you like to see it be done? Like, I think it depends on what the angle is that we're taking when we do the work. And so, um, we have to frame it in such a way that we make sure we're getting the right information back that can inform the work and help us be successful in bringing it forward. Whereas I felt like last time, you know, we met with people and they were like, oh, you know, I remember people saying, well, which do you think? Oh, just leave everything as is. And, you know, if, when we start looking at those 10-year projections, we might not think that that's a, a real possibility. So how do we, how do we do, how do we use public input to make sure that the process is the best that we can have and the smoothest we can have when we move that consolidation forward?
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I'm going to do something a little bit weird, which no pressure here, but John, I think you're listening and I, I'm pretty sure you're a teacher at our schools. So I'm wondering if you have any thoughts to share about, um, one of the groups that we've identified that we really want to be able to communicate more effectively with? And whether that's one-way or two-way conversation is our teachers. Do you have any thoughts that you could share with us? And it does not have to be the second, but if you do, maybe you just raise your hands and let us know some of what you're hearing and thinking. One of the things I struggled with, oh, good, I was just going to say is that my skills as a facilitator, I think that's hard. You know, the board members are not necessarily skilled facilitators. And so when Maureen talks about, well, you just have to be clear about how to do it or what you want to hear. That makes sense intuitively, but I know when push comes to shove, I don't miss. I feel like I always have the skills to redirect a conversation in that way. So, um, John, thank you for taking me up on this. I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but I appreciate it. Let's, let's hear from you.
Yeah, sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, John.
Yeah, hi guys. Thanks. Yeah, thanks for, uh, let me join in here. Of course, I'm here taking notes for the union primarily. Yeah, I'm absolutely, um, willing to join in as well. I think that's a really good point that, um, the balance between getting input and having already made a decision, you know, if you've, if you're already committed to a decision before you get the input is tricky because you do want to refine, you might be wanting to refine your decision. But if the input suggests a, a different direction altogether, it can be really hard to process that. We have a, you know, it, it can be very similar in education too, when we collect feedback. We're always trying to get feedback from families and from students. But as it, you know, when you're in the role of educator, sometimes you make decisions for reasons that are. But as it, you know, when you're in the role of educator, sometimes you make decisions for reasons that are, you know, you just have a different perspective. And so, you know, not everything is up for discussion in the same way that it might seem like it is when you collect feedback. So I can, I can totally appreciate that situation.
That was very gently said.
I, yeah, I, I do think, I, I like the idea as I'm listening to you guys talk about whether the timeline should, like the stretching out of the timeline to make room for giving people processing time. I think that's, I appreciate that it's built in because it just seems like what I was thinking as I was listening to that part of the conversation is that so many people, maybe the reason that in the past, some of the conversations have gotten stretched out if, to the extent that they have, is that people, when they need that processing time, are just going to have to get it one way or another anyway. And so if you build it into the process early, it might be easier to stick to your schedule because it just builds that, that need of the community and, and of the board members really. You know, I'm mostly think, I'm mostly approaching this right, you know, as far as sharing out today, thinking of the process, not so much the, the specific input. I know you guys are focused on the process tonight, so. I would love to, I would love, I do think as far as that question of how to get, how to have conversations, like I totally hear that idea that the public comment isn't really a great way to dialogue. I, I would like to see ways for the community to interface with board members so that the community has a chance to. I know not everybody's going to be satisfied with whatever decision is made, but just so that as much as possible, their concerns can be built into the plan. Because I think when people feel like their concerns were heard, whether it's the same decision or not, I could be naive about that. I mean, maybe people just are very outcome oriented. And if they're not satisfied with the outcome, they're not going to be satisfied with the process either. But I think generally speaking, if, if people feel validated by the process, they'll probably be more accepting of whatever the decision is at the end.
Thank you very much. And I know we did put you on the spot, so I appreciate your willingness to take that risk.
No worries.
Yeah. I wonder, it feels like we still then, if we look at this idea of the public engagement activity, it doesn't feel to me like we're clear yet what we would be trying to get out of it. Jonathan and Jeremy, do you have any thoughts now that we've heard a little more?
Well, I, I mean, it's interesting because in terms of what the notes had written last week, it was the development process for a feedback on the decision and feedback on the implementation. So, but I mean, ultimately we are moving towards the 1014 vote, a vote regarding seven, eight. And even though we have a plan for a plan and, you know, our goal is to put a timeline to get that in place. Given the change, the, the different condition and the absence of a bond, I do feel like that's still a decision. I don't, I don't feel like we can put the cart before the horse and say that's what's going to happen. And so I guess we really, you know, I, I believe we really are asking for feedback on the decision, at least in terms of that, that that'd be my take on it. And we can get feedback on the implementation, but that might be worth doing after the vote? I don't know whether, or we could try to get both at the same time, like, well, if, because maybe getting feedback on the implementation would be helpful. People say, well, you know what would really work is if you could do this, but X, Y, Z. And so get some thinking positively about it in terms of the feedback and implementation. So I, I guess I feel strongly that we, given what we've defined for 1014 board meeting, that there's a vote on it, that we are definitely looking for feedback on the decision. And I'm a little open in terms of whether we're looking for feedback in the implementation or whether we would do that in another set of meetings after. But that's, that's just sort of the way I look at it.
One kind of feedback I wondered about getting early on, and then I don't know if you remember, we did that survey in the fall that turned out to just be a sort of disaster. The idea was originally to ask like, one question, which was sort of, what's your highest priority? As the board goes forward, so, you know, and then the other idea was going to be, now here's an open ended question. But it seems to me that one of the things that, you know, that, that thing that Christine was getting at and Maureen, like, don't ask a question you don't really want an answer to. I mean, if, if we, are we asking a question of the, if we're asking a question of the public, what do you think? Are we looking for them to say yes or no? Or are we looking for them to say, our highest priority is equity or our highest priority is rigor? Or, you know, like that kind of thing. And in some ways I kind of like that because then we can evaluate this plan based on that as opposed to just yes, no. Because I do think sometimes it feels to me similar to what John was saying a little bit, like, there's a lot of complicated stuff that goes into these decisions. And sometimes when people give you feedback, it's clear that they've really considered all that. But sometimes it's clear that they have one or two priorities and based on those priorities, now they're, they're saying no, but they maybe haven't really considered everything. Or yes, but they haven't necessarily considered everything. So is there a way to get something that's useful for the board to consider that's not just the, the binary yes or no?
Excuse me, well, I think it's pretty clear we're going to be getting all the feedback we want on yes, no. Without necessarily soliciting it, so I hear your point. People are not shy about that. So, yeah. If we can ask for some more nuanced, ask for, ask some more nuanced questions and get some more information along with that, that would be helpful.
I guess I think that's, where we get that information is through that, what's the implementation look like? I just, you know, I, whether we liked it, sort of like the speed of it, which I don't think I, I did. In terms of how we were presented with information than presented with a decision in front of us in the late winter, I guess it was there. Like it's probably like an oversimplification, but to me, it's kind of like going to the doctor and having them recommend surgery. And then going to the public and saying, should I do it or not as a whole? And I think, you know, people might have opinions about that based on their experience with surgery or whatnot. And, but the doctor has told us that the surgery is necessary. I don't know, maybe you ask the team, like, how do we, how do we do this, right? And you ask for the second opinions. I just, I just think that we get more of that nuance if we ask for the second opinions on like, how should we go about this? We, we know there's this question around the merger in front of us. And I think we have, we've seen relative support for it. I think we're going to be facing financial situations that push us towards, you know, those decisions anyway. But I think that we get that nuance out of asking folks, how do we implement it? And when we ask, how do we implement it? We will get the, the answers from folks who say, don't, right? Like, we'll, we'll get the yes or no, I guess. We'll get the no's anyway, if we ask the question, how do we implement? But I think we get way more information if we ask, how do we do this? Like, like John, you said, like, you know, we'll get the no's one way or another. Just get more if we ask that more, that less binary question like, like Tari, so.
So, yeah, I think that, that's, that's a good point, Jeremy. Thank you.
If we bring this back to a schedule of activities, how do we? You know, are you saying that it's almost like we want to structure the first set of public engagement around? How do we make this decision as good as possible essentially? Or as opposed to, should we do it or not?
Well, I mean, I, as I, you know, it might be that, should we do it or not? It seems like that's probably going to get answered. Either way, although I could see the potential for there being some anger if, if we're basically saying, how should we do this? That we're, we haven't even voted on yet. So. So I guess maybe what we could do is sort of design it really to minimize feedback on the decision. Get, keep that as brief as possible and then spend more time talking about feedback on implementation as much as possible. As opposed to just bypassing feedback on the decision completely.
Yes, in some ways I wonder if, does it make sense to just provide small group Q and A to answer questions and then invite people to send us feedback? Not necessarily, I mean, it could be then, but it also could be after. And then after a vote, to me, it does feel a little funny to vote on how to, or to ask people how to implement it before we voted on it.
Would that, would that inform us? I just, like, to your point around the nuances, I just, I think, I worry even about the Q and A because I think that whether sort of like the bias towards one decision or not is, is overt in a, in a board member. That answers might lean, lean towards, you know, a yes or a no anyway. And so that's again, one of those situations where unless the whole board is privy to those questions and then the answers, you know, the whole public is, is privy to the larger answers, we sort of get those same pockets that we identified earlier as a sort of a challenge of that first, first setup that we did. And I, I guess I'm, I'm sure there's a way to get to a middle place right here, like, like from like, is it just a binary? Do we do this or not? Or a presumptuous, how do we do it? Like, is there a middle ground there? Is there somewhere that we can say, you know, I think, and Atari, I think you were probably on to it in the way of looking at, you know, sort of going back to those priorities, like, what are your priorities? And then, then the board has some, some thinking to do around like, what meets those priorities? Also considering what we know as a board, right? In terms of packets that we look at, because that's important too. It's not just about public opinion here, right? It's also about the information that, that we study on a weekly basis. And I, and I guess that just gives an opportunity for some more, just like a more robust conversation at the board level versus just, well, I heard a bunch of no's or I heard a bunch of yeses. And, and so I'm going to stand with those people or I'm not going to stand. It's like, well, I heard that people thought if they, either a dream scenario would be this, like, how do we, we're not there, but how do we get somewhere closer to that? And I think that just creates opportunities for more discussion versus a, I'm all there, I'm all, I'm all against.
Yeah, I think this has been, you know, this is really useful discussion. I think we're, we're getting somewhere. And I, I also wonder a little bit like, in terms of the timeline, I mean, I think we've kind of figured out where it fits on the calendar. And I don't know if we need to like fully design the outreach right now, other than maybe just this question of like, how many meetings? And I think that we're, we're zoning in on one or two. Is that fair to say? Maybe two would be our top preference.
Well, it seems like, yeah, at least one before and at least one after. Assuming if, if you, if the vote goes through as a yes merge, then we'd want to have at least one afterwards. But, yeah, so before the decision, would we want to have one or two? Like, we could do something where we really try to reach out and, or has two, like, one is particularly staff focused or one is parent and taxpayer focused. Or we could just, you know, really make concerted efforts to get everybody to come to these, these meetings.
Yeah, I kind of liked, I mean, the idea of one being staff focused and one being community focused. Because if you have everybody at the meeting, then it gets kind of overwhelming and goes on and, and it's easy for one person. But I, I mean, I would, it would be nice to have a way, you know, we, we, you know, I'm like entirely clear on, on the history of it. But there, you know, the, the vote to have, you know, you, feedback from the union on explicitly have time. I think the, the board has, you know, will have to ask them, but I think they've shown some interest in getting this feedback. And then also, you know, at the time hearing, you know, to me, it was hearing from Harvard teachers and CrossFit teachers and just hearing from a lot. I think that was an important bit of feedback to get. And a lot of them had said at the time that they were in favor of the consolidation, but were not in favor of the timeline. So it'd be interesting, I think I want to hear back from that group explicitly. And I, and I think it was something we defined at the last meeting. And it might make sense to try to, to do that separately. That, that, I like the idea, but I think obviously you have to get that. There, there are some on the board who maybe don't want to hear as much from staff because of, you know, concern about self-interest versus enlightened self-interest, et cetera. And, and the prospect of, of there being cuts, obviously is never going to be particularly popular.
I was just wondering, do, so many of our staff are actually residents too. So do you get to wear two hats in this conversation as we all wear a lot of hats in a lot of these conversations? And I just wanted to say that I just see John's hands up, hand is up.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, John, let me come over and I've got to click some buttons here. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry if I'm inserting myself now more than I should. I, now that I started talking, I'm thinking about hearing again. Yeah, when I put my hand up, it was before Jeremy made his comment about asking the question, what are your priorities? And that's really, that's almost, that's very much what I was thinking, might be the kind of question you, that would be a good one to hear from the community before you finalize the plan. Because I do think avoiding that sense that it's all or nothing is, is a good, it would be a good thing to try to do. Or, and I, and I think it's tough if you, for, I guess this isn't necessarily going to help you, but I want to just, if I just kind of focus in on one aspect of the, of the distinction between whether to, whether to say merge or how to merge. And I think if you say to someone, for example, we've already decided to merge, how should we do it? And if a, if a community member says that, and maybe it's only one, or maybe you hear it a lot, that class size is the most important thing to me. And they're, and they say, well, however you do it, my limit is that I really want the class size to be here. And then, you know, there may be members of the board who say, well, that, if that is the highest priority, then my decision about whether to do it is different. Or does that make sense? So sometimes the, sometimes the specifics of the questions almost undo the decision that you've already made. And I think there were, there were moments where when the faculty were sort of trying to give input through those public comments, it was really difficult because we understood how complicated the conversation was. But sometimes the difference between whether to do it and how to do it is, it can be a big difference. And I, I just wanted to also comment that when I, I was looking for Maureen's comment earlier, I thought she had a really insightful question, which was, which is another version of what are your priorities? And hers, she asked, what are, what are the things you're really trying to avoid giving up? And I guess there are probably ways you could phrase that positively, but it would be something like, you know, what are your, what are your real goals? And what are your maybe limits or, or lines? And I just think those kinds of questions, I don't know how you ask them. I don't know if you ask them in small groups or you ask them in surveys, but I think they could be asked. And I think you could really hear from community members what their, what their priorities are and what their limits are. And it would be a lot different than having to be a community member who just has only the option to vote on a budget to sort of decide all or nothing, you know? So anyway, that, I, I promise that'll be my last bit of, thanks.
Always good to hear from you. Thanks.
So I, I see that we're, we're getting close to our end time. And I just want to see how we're doing in terms of our work goals. Let's see, if I go to our. Okay, so we have a very rough outline for. I, I would have loved, I guess, if we could get a little more specific about public engagement activities, but maybe we're just not quite ready to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I, again, it seems like we, we've got some time to work on that. And it is something that the board would give feedback on. And I, I was, I wasn't entirely sure that that was in, that designing, what exactly those meetings look like is, is even in our purview right now.
Yeah, I guess I just, sometimes it's like that idea that if you give people something to talk about, it's easier than just saying, does anybody have thoughts? Like, it's easy to react to a draft. But you're right, Jonathan. Like it's easy to react to a draft. Um, but you're right, Jonathan, we don't, we don't necessarily have to come up with that.
Yeah. But I, I also feel like, you know, just to be positive, but I think that, you know, some of the thoughts, I think we already have some stuff to react to here in terms of this, uh, you know, I changed this item just slightly to say, suggest we shape it around priorities as opposed to simply a binary yes or no. Because I think that's, we've gotten pretty close to consensus on that in terms of.
Oh, about the approach to take? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I feel, I mean, I feel like that, so we're down the road a little, a little ways on that. Um, and I, I guess we could, we could, yeah. And we have the concept of two meetings. And we can get feedback on that.
Okay.
Whether people are comfortable with a, a staff focused meeting and one, and, and yes, I, I, I feel pretty positive about the, given that we're talking about a, a meeting in, um,
Four months from now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we, we can have time to tighten it up a little bit more.
Yeah. Okay.
I know time goes fast though. You blink and then it's going to be like, it's going to feel like tomorrow when we're at this meeting.
Yeah. In terms of how we share what we've talked about tonight with the board, it seems like we have a list of questions we'd like to share with them so that they could use that as a jumping off point. To maybe add to the list of questions. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then we can share our timeline.
Yeah.
And so that timeline right now, we basically, it sort of really ends in the week after. I mean, I think it makes sense to kind of leave that public engagement activities re- implementation in there for now, even if we don't have specific dates. And maybe we actually just kind of get rid of these other things because we haven't gone that far. We're just saying that sometime after the 14th, that wants to happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So that's something. Okay. And then, oh, I had wondered if we wanted to ask the board to task us with working with the admin team to like finalize that question list.
Oh, yes. That's good, remember, good memory on that.
And that, if we do that, it would, we'd just have another meeting. You know, maybe the week after the 24th or something like that. Okay. And, um, let's see what else here.
I'm away that week. Not that it shouldn't.
Oh, okay.
Committee shouldn't meet, but just we're, we're planning around that.
That sounds good. Everybody needs a break.
In terms of the, in terms of the questions, I was just reading down that list.
Great.
Do we want to add one about, and it may already be in there and I'm just not seeing it, um, just listing the, um, the differences. Oh, I see it. Comparis- sorry. I just, I just missing it. Comparison of each school's current programming and what the new school will be like program wise. Yep. That's, I just want to make sure that was in there.
Okay. And some of these might be a little bit redundant too. We didn't, you know.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Were you feeling good as a committee to bring this to the board? And in fact, we've, we've done a lot of work and had a lot of really good conversation. Sorry, I just hear in your voice, a little bit of like, like, whoa, that's a lot to compile or something is going on there. And I just want to make sure that the three of us, you know, include Tim and his feedback in this as well, but
No, I'm actually, I'm
ready to bring it and, and feel good about what we, we, what we're about to bring up. So.
You know, I'm pleased and I feel like we've been working to just keep finding points of agreement and where can we keep moving forward. And I really appreciate actually everybody's efforts, including the audience members to try to frame our conversation in that way. And I, I think perhaps I foolishly expected that our timeline would be like a little more exact than it is in some ways, but I think that was a, a little bit of a jumping too far ahead on my person. And maybe I, maybe it was even like, it could never get that way. Maybe it was too, it's too early to, we, we don't even have enough information to go that far, which I think I'm hearing a little bit from you guys too.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I like, I was like, it's a good amount of information to present, you know, it's not going to overwhelm the board, but there's a few interesting points there should, should spark some interesting conversations. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about it myself.
Oh, great. And I think what I'll do is I'll just reformat it or like, you know, I might wordsmith it, but I'll send it to you guys and ask you to just make comments to me privately. Instead of changing, right? Or maybe I'll send you each your own thing. We have to be careful about, like, we can't just all work on the same document, uh, cause that does O M L problems, I think. But I'll, I'll figure that out. And then that way you'll know what's heading out in the board packet. And I wonder, does it make sense almost to just have like a separate mini packet about our work as a committee? And put that in the board packet?
What would be included?
I think it could be, it could just be like, uh, the minutes, or it could be a, a narrative about our first meeting and our second, uh, maybe one paragraph each or something. And then it could be the timeline, the list of questions. And, and also like, with, like with the questions, I, I want to be clear about what we're hoping the board will be ready to do on the 24th, which kind of means, please take some time to think about these questions before the meeting so that you're, you're really ready on the 24th, because that's the time, that kind of thing. I don't know.
I think it's a good idea. I don't know that the narratives are necessary, but I do think that direct, that sort of prodding, gentle prodding. And, you know, please consider that these questions that, you know, this is, uh, this conversation is somewhat contained. And doesn't, doesn't dominate the agenda for that.
Okay.
Having some, again, in the interest of that, giving folks processing time and
Yeah.
not, you know, just sort of orienting their attention to those, those questions so that they, folks feel good about the time they've had to think about it and, and bring their feedback to the, the board table.
Okay. So I'll share that with you guys so you could make sure that you're good with that. And I'll probably check in with Tim too, and just see if he has anything to add or nuance this a bit. I'm filling out the minutes as we talk in case you're wanting to check in and make sure that that feels good.
Yeah, I'm watching you do it. Looks good to me.
Okay. So we, seems like we don't really have a task to set a next meeting to at this time, but we'll be asking for a task of something that will hopefully not take a long time. And actually will be potentially pretty exciting to just to think about, like, putting what, what's all the information we want and putting it all together. Any feedback right now about how we're doing or things that could do, be doing better in this subcommittee stuff?
No, thank you for, for leading it.
Oh.
I think it's going well.
Yeah, it's really, I'm pleased with the way we're all working together and just really trying to hear each other and, and it's, it's really satisfying actually. Thank you. Okay. Well, hopefully that kind of takes care of us for tonight then. Thank you to the subcommittee and then also to Christine, John, Kristen and Laura and Maureen, who was here earlier. And to Curtis, who is our tech mastermind, who helps us look somewhat organized. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tari.
Yeah, I'll see you soon.
We'll see you next week.
Sounds great. Good night, everybody.
Good night.